Good evening. Called this meeting to order. I would like first, ask that you all bow your heads for a word of prayer. First, grace is heaven and the father. We thank you for Harris County and the quality of life we have and are blessed to have our living here. We ask that you help this commission as we deliberate actions that involve this county and on behalf of this county, that they be for the betterment of the county, for the conditions that center it that are in front of us. We ask, good lord, that you bless our employees. We bless, ask that you bless our commissioners and all of our citizens and that you keep us safe. We thank you for the safety that we live in because of these individuals and because of our armed services personnel. We ask your blessing on them. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Good morning. Now, we have a distinguished group with us tonight who are here to have a proclamation by representatives of the American Business Women's Association. And I'd like to call their president, Paula Fluterson.
I'm pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from regular session of September the 6th, the work session of August the 16th. Commissioners, please, there has been a change to the minutes, and so I would ask for a motion. True approval?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion for approval. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Careful, citizens, Nancy, Nancy? Old business, is any other old business we brought on? All right, then we move into new business. First is the proclamation honoring the American Business Women's Association. And I would like the few ladies and please come up to the front, stand in face of the audience, and I'll read this proclamation. Does this mean you have a conflict with that? Whereas, the American Business Women's Association was founded in 1949 and is a national association of working women that has a strong tradition of promoting the advancement of women. And whereas, business, economic, and social analyses indicate that the current trends of women entering the workforce and obtaining increasingly responsible positions will continue to contribute to the betterment of businesses and communities. And whereas, the mission of the American Business Women's Association is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, support, and national recognition. And whereas, American Business Women's Association Day was initiated in 1982 as a national day on which Americans can recognize the achievements of the millions of employed women in the United States. And whereas, joint congressional resolutions were passed in 1983 and 1986, designating September the 22nd as National American Business Women's Day. Now, therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Thursday, September the 22nd, 2016, as American Business Women's Day in Harris County, so proclaiming this 20th day of September of 2016. Let's give these ladies a hand, please. And I will now entertain a motion for the approval of this. We have a motion for approval. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hands. Motion carries. Ladies, ladies. Yes, we can, or certainly we can't. All right. Why don't you all go? Yeah, I think this probably works better.
It's hard for us big folks to get help.
You won't wreck me on that one.
All right, let me get in a little tighter, because I've got all this table in it. All right, everybody, now take a couple of smiles.
Oh, I want more.
All right. Thank you, ladies, for the good work you do. Okay, next item on the agenda is financial statement for June 2016, which was previously provided to you. Do I have a motion? Right, do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a second? Then a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Oh, yes, ma'am.
When we were in our budget work sessions, this board decided that we were going to have a separate department for the airport. And I don't see that yet. I'm just wondering, when are we going to have that?
Pretty soon.
Which is? This is about my third request.
I know, I know that. Let's say, I don't know if I can make it the next meeting, but the next, we'll do it for the, the August report.
October 18?
Pardon?
October 18? You'll have it ready?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 10:18, it'll be the August report. Okay? Any other discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Next is a tax refund request from Terry Moser, 1493 Central Church Road, Midland, requesting a refund in the amount of $18.53, which was the after-war tax on her vehicle, which she renewed and then traded the vehicle, so the tax commissioner agrees. Do I have a motion?
Who's agreeing? Grant, who's coming?
We have a second. Discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Northwest Harris Longview Fire Department Station, fire station issued by Byron Hawkins, chief of the Northwest Harris Longview Fire Department, requesting again on the agenda to discuss his fire station and splotch proceeds. Mr. Hawkins, good to see you this evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Did everyone get a copy of the information that I just passed along? My reason for addressing you is that Northwest Station is in deplorable condition. It's not a new topic, even before Danny left us. It was something we've been addressing, and it seems to get up on the table once in a while and die as the last of the century or something. So, I felt it worthy of addressing you and proposing what I have. Not that we don't want a new engine, but the monies for a new engine would go towards almost three-quarters of what it would cost to build a new building on the site that we already own. Trying to fix up the present station, in my opinion, is not worthwhile. There's a lot of issues with the old building, and I think it would be putting money in an area where it wouldn't be prudent for the county, excuse me, or the taxpayers of the county.
All right, sir. I know we have looked at that before, and it is in deplorable condition. And I know you were at one point getting to look for quotes.
We have.
Did you give us an update on where that is?
We have three quotes on the new structure. We got a set of plans, as I mentioned in the information I gave you. We've had architectural drawings made up, and we've had three different contractors bid on the project itself in total. Those numbers run between $400,000 and $500,000,000. That was on the first quote. Some of the things that we've looked at, quite frankly, could be in kind if we were to do the building ourselves, because we do have people that are in the trades that could do a lot of the work for us. I think at prices that are more reasonable, but we can't look at the project in those terms, quite frankly, until we get it secured and to be able to look at how we can afford it. We've also got, as I mentioned in my proposal, approximately $100,000 in a building fund, which, quite frankly, I think is a great achievement by a department like ourselves, because in the area where we're located, we don't have a population density that other departments have, and it's quite difficult for us to acquire money. Although our residents do a fantastic job of shoring this up, it still isn't going to be what we would need to get close to a building that is, you know, should be on the right. It will take us an immense amount of time to acquire the money.
All right, thank you, sir. This involves changing the allocation of some splotch dollars. Mr. Taylor, is this something that you need to look into, or?
Probably, probably so, but if, you know, it depends on how general the splotch statute, the splotch election was, you know, fire.
Instead trucks.
Fire protection, I think you could go either way with it.
Instead trucks.
But trucks, well, you know, if you don't have a place to park the trucks.
That's quite honestly concerning.
No need a new truck.
As I mentioned, also, we were fortunate to have a grant award from FEMA that we're specing out a new tanker, which is going to be essentially a pumper tanker. It'll have a 1250 GPM pump on it. It won't be a Class 1 pumper according to ISO, but at the same time, it'll be an excellent unit. And I think we can live with the equipment we've currently got. It's all in pretty good shape, even though there's age on it. I know there's a risk and everything, but there's, if you balance that out with having to park expensive equipment outside, and we're losing ground in the building as we speak, because we can't keep a lot of our equipment dry that we need to over time, so...
Mr. Chairman, you know, of course, the splotch statute says you can't just abandon the project unless you have another referendum. But I think, and I have done it a couple times before, such as the parking lot, parking deck. You know, if we're still using it for fire, and it was allocated, going to be allocated for them, fire services, if it becomes, if the need became something even greater than that, then dealing with fire, then I think we could probably do it. I would suggest, let me prepare a resolution similar to what I've, a couple I've prepared in the past, unless you adopt that resolution, to authorize the allocation of money from a truck to the building. And then, one of those things that, you know, who's going to complain about? As long as it's, you know, it's there. And then, of course, you know, you've got workable equipment. If you didn't have workable equipment, I'd probably say it'd be a little bit, a little bit more at risk to do that. I think for everybody at the next meeting, I can have a resolution ready for you to adopt.
I'm definitely in favor of doing this, as long as it's legal to do it. And I was going to ask if you could have it ready by the next meeting.
Yes, I will.
In your opinion, we should delay until we get to that resolution?
Yes, you know, adopt that resolution, and I think you'll probably be all right. I mean, it's not to say somebody's going to come in and sue you, stalking the other on the other hand, too. You're still using splotch dollars for fire protection in the Northwest Harris area, you know, and that's what they need, is not only the fire equipment, which they have some of, and can get fire with, and then, but they need a place to put it also. So, you take it one or the other. So, I, you know, I think you can probably make it work.
Do you need that in the form of a resolution?
No, no, sir, I won't.
The second part is, have they ordered the fire equipment already?
No.
No. We're presently specing out all the trucks. The only, the only one that is outside the norm is the one that we have on a grant, and that has to go a different route.
All right, sir. Well, in two weeks from tonight, it's October the 4th, the first meeting, and we should have that resolution, and you would be able to at least take out.
I know we're going outside the box, and I was a little concerned about the splotch, but at the same time, I had to weigh out the needs, and I think the need in the station is much greater. And also, location-wise, we own the property, so we can, we can start construction rather quickly. It's clear, and so it'd be a great location for a future EMS station or even a sheriff's department satellite area to stop in. We don't have anything on that west side, so I know that the deputies use some of the fire stations in other parts of the area. So, it's, to me, it's, it's an important, it's also a voting, pretty soon.
We know it's needed, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
I have a couple questions. One is, what, do you have plans now for what will happen to the old school building?
No, ma'am. That's yours.
The county does nothing? No, county?
Yes. That used to be school board.
I remember that.
But when they took, when we started on the project for the new radio system, that site where we are was going to be a tower site, and then they decided against that. They did some clearing and everything, got ready for it, and then decided against it. But I would also recommend an air of caution with that building and everything, because there's some things that are in that building that just aren't real nice, you know.
Do you have any second questions?
It is a problem, dear Ash.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir. Okay, next item is, we have a red, red bill has, his term expires September 30th. He has indicated that he does not wish to be reappointed in the voting, board of zoning adjustments. And Commissioner Woods, I believe, has an individual that he'd like to appoint.
I'd like to appoint Michael Downs to the position of the board of zoning adjustments.
From which point?
He's from Parkdale.
All right, you putting that as more of a motion, sir?
Yes. Is this that district, or is this an at-large? No, it's a district.
Sure, Mr. Taylor.
I can't stop saying.
It's okay. You got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is job description and classification for a chief financial officer. Nancy, you go.
Yes, sir. We had job description and classification jury had been sent to y'all earlier, a few to review in anticipation of this meeting. This particular position was not included with the recent compensation and classification study. I did send the draft job description to Springstead, and they made one minor change, I think they added forwards, and then they recommended it be a grade 26, which is in the grade where a lot of our department heads are in.
Mr. Mayor? I have one question. There's no specific mention in here about splotch, keeping up with the splotch record. Is the other language in here that you feel covers that?
Paul looked at this, and I would think it does cover it where it says the county funds. All financial records.
I thought it was in there, but I just, I wanted to make sure it was, because that's an important part of it. Okay. So, I mean, we need a motion to approve this job description and the salary classification.
Yes, sir. I would like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, go ahead and listen.
It's the CDVG. We received our usual letter we get every two years from the RVRC asking if there's going to be any interest for us to be pursuing a CDVG grant in 2017. And if you know, we are still working on our 2012 CDVG grant. It's taken a long time. We don't have to tell them what the topic is. You just need to tell them if there's an interest. There is a $750 fee for them to submit the application, and I don't know if that would have to go in, although they need an answer by September 26th if there's interest. Projects have to meet a 70% low-income homes, and they have to be at least 30 homes. So, it narrows down our, we were hard pressed to find the CDVG. They're currently doing, yes.
Yeah, the last was very difficult to come up with one. I don't know if any of you have anything that you want us to investigate, but if so, then it'll be in the time of the meeting, and so we can check and see if it qualifies.
I know an area that qualifies. I just, I'd rather get the other one completely done, considering how long it's taken before we undertake a $750,000 and not be able to use it.
All right.
Is it good for two years or one year?
The grant itself is a two-year grant. We had to have ours extended.
But we had to make the request at this time.
Tell them there's an interest, so they can start getting around.
Next time we have this opportunity, would be two years or next year?
Yes, two years. I think it's every two years.
Would you check and see if it's two years or annually? Because it's two years, I would like to just double it.
Well, when I pulled up my note that I had on my computer, it was dated 2015. So, I'm going to say it's every two years, because we don't have that. I'll check.
Yeah, let's double check.
So, you were tabled?
Yes.
It's been a while.
I don't know if we need to table it.
We had to. They need it since 26.
Oh, they need it by the 26th.
There's either, there's either there's an interest or there's not. I can tell them there's an interest difference.
All right. So, I guess, yeah, just make a motion that...
I will make a motion on that the agreement is a two-year agreement, that we go ahead and request a River Valley partnership to be, make the actual...
We don't even need to say we can get in there, just make a motion to put it that we will apply for it, and we can always stop it.
Okay. So, we would not be obligated, no, for the $715.
We would be obligated, well...
We won't be obligated until we make, tell them we want to make the application, and Nancy will...
And even then, we won't be obligated unless we get the grant. Also, if you don't get the grant, you're not obligated to get it. For what they charge, yeah. Yeah, we're supposed to be obligated for that.
We're just being obligated.
Yes, for that. I'll second it.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Anything else, Nancy?
Just on the Washington Road status, they're supposed to be finishing the markings this week. I guess that's the pavement markings. The cure period just expired, so that's what the delay was in getting the markings down. And that the only outstanding item that they should have done by the end of the day tomorrow is the replacement of one wooden fence.
All right, so the shoulders are done, and the signs are put up?
This is what the, the construction guys told me. I have it from the engineer, I want it from the construction.
Tentatively, and just tentatively, there is going to be a meeting Friday morning. Commissioner Tuning, myself, and Mike Brown will meet out there with some of the residents to actually pinpoint exactly where they think something else needs to be done. There are some items, the signings that was to be out there were specified in the contracts, so we'll make sure that those items are done, and any that are not, Michael Brown will evaluate those from a county standpoint, take care of them later. But we will have kind of eyes and boots on the ground, looking at this and discussing it with the neighbors to make sure what is not done. As parenthetically, I happened to run into Danny Kemp from the, in Billy's today. He hollered at me across the store and said, "Things look great at Washington Road." He was thrilled with what was going on. It's a thousand percent better. I asked him about his fence, and he said, "There's only, he said, "They've done most of it, there's just one section left, and we're working on that." So, at least that was one of the neighbors that had concerns, that said he's very happy. So, I think Friday we will, we will be able to see everything, having been wrapped up pretty quickly there.
I don't know if the engineer done a walkthrough, whatever you want to call it.
That's, we weren't able to get in touch with the engineer. We did get in touch with Robert Spade in the U.R., as you said, and they will have theirs finished supposedly. Okay. Nancy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, Mr. Taylor, I'll turn over to you, the agreement with Electronic Enterprises, the airport AWI maintenance agreement.
Yes, sir. The airport has a system that has been put in, I think it's been out about, out there about a year, that, for the AWI system. The initial contract for installation included the maintenance for a period of one year. That year expires on September 30th. And what you're looking at here attached is a, is a maintenance agreement with Electronic Enterprises include, is the current, provides the current maintenance. And this will be, will continue on the present level of maintenance at $275 a month. And there will be periodic inspections and adjustments to the equipment. They'll utilize what parts that you have and necessary that might more there, or if there's an emergency arises, they will have somebody dispatched within 24 hours to prepare the AWI system. The, for your information, both you as well as Electronic Enterprises have the right to terminate the agreement without cause with 30 days' advance written notice. If there are any price adjustments, they will be adhered to the contract without negotiation. And the, this is governed by the laws of the state of Georgia. I'd recommend this to you. I found it kind of... I found it kind of difficult to read old English print. And, but I would, I would recommend that you, that we had a multi-year, then the two would be back to other contracts. It provides that you terminate annually at the end of every year unless, and put it in, it's automatically renewed unless there's some action taken before that. And then they also provide that for mediation, no arbitration, and then jurisdictions here in Harris County. It's, it's a, a right we put on most multi-year contracts and I recommend it to you before your approval.
Make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it and yours is with Mr. Taylor's. Change this to.
Make that a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please, if you can. Motion carries. All right, Trinity Electrical?
Yes, sir. There's a construction contract for you between Harris County and Trinity Electrical Services. And the contract was requested to draw a contract about Pond for the, for the airport and Trinity Electrical Services is going to, it probably already has, as of the end of the day, drilled seventy-five holes in the terminal apron, moved the dirt, put down some tie-down anchors and backfilled it because we, if you recall, I think the last discussion we had about this, there was going to be some flying in and they needed some tie-downs. And that's what this was for. The contract was to furnish all the materials and labor. The price was for sixteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And the, the work, I understand, started yesterday.
Five hundred to one fifty?
It's five ten.
Five ten?
Yeah, sixteen thousand five ten. What did I say?
No, you said it right.
You said it right. It's just spread in years, one fifty.
Oh, okay. The, but the work supposedly was completed. They had the fly-ins this weekend.
Fly-ins next week.
Yes, next week, so. The contractor should have been completed in Pond was to, there's going to be no payment of the amount due until the final inspection and cleanup on the project site. And then, once they do that, Pond will authorize the release of the sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Who does the final inspection?
Who does? Pond. I mean, one of their people, and I'm not sure where this name is.
Tim Fred.
Yeah, there you go.
And this was done in lieu of the other project that we were looking at, the big baby project and, and you didn't know what it was over a hundred thousand dollars.
Let us table some how much they're spending. Make it up to this.
Couple's over a hundred thousand, okay.
Yeah, it's only a couple hundred.
Yeah. So, yes, and we do have at least, the last time I checked, which was about three days ago, we had at least forty-five plumes coming out from the weekend, not for the weekend, so it's going to be probably about a six-day event on there having, most of them staying at the lodge and spa or in more across the street and we've got some local restaurants catering some of their meals, so they're going to be these pennies a dollar a year to.
Question on number two, saying that contractor will not be provided to tie-down anchors. Is that an additional expense? Do I have?
We got, we got those.
And how many planes will this accommodate in the city?
Yes, the total project, because they're not all in one place, but I think they were, they were going to be able to accommodate fifty-one to, to planes.
Which we have now in this.
Yeah.
How many planes we expect?
Well, right now, there is, or three days ago, there were forty-five. So, we have a little more, we have a little more to put down. All right, do I have a motion?
I'm going to have a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Taylor, do you prefer this to be in the, have legal, you know, if there's any legal problems that you, we usually deal with the.
Notices.
Notices.
You're meaning, meaning. In Harris County and Finkston?
Yeah.
Ten fifteen.
Yes, it.
Yeah, it's about fifteen.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah, it's just fifteen. It's either mediation or, if King resolved it, then go mediation. If no, if King's love, he saw mediation, either, either party made files in Harris County and that's where, then you as well as jurisdictions have.
Yes. It was fifteen. Yeah, that fifteen too. Now, I think what Jim referred to is on the last page, make sure that you were listed to receive those things out. Somehow.
No, I was just worried about this.
Oh, I misunderstood.
And I didn't get that far in the meeting.
Okay, all right.
I didn't get it two minutes before.
I understand. It's been a check on that, thank you.
We didn't want your back there to, to, to this, anybody.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please, if you can. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I know you talked about it a little while ago, but I have a question if I may concerning the request by Northwest Harris Fire Department of who will be owning the property on which the new fire station is located.
Fire station already owned.
Are we going to own the building? Well, if the money's coming from SPOSS, should be, should be, are we?
We own our truck too.
You? It becomes SPOSS.
I'll, I'll, if I can do that, I think, you know, you use the fire trucks. I thought we titled those in the name of the, of the, the fire department.
Not when the money comes from the county or the tax proceeds.
I'm not sure. I know that there's some that the fire department's on their own by.
They own.
And I know they, they.
Yeah, that's, and I thought all of them that were.
No. Anytime the county contributes funds or the SPOSS, it's tied into the county. That's what it has been.
Let's look that up and make sure.
Well, we can always, you know, we think, I mean, this way we can lease it back, you know, transfer, lease it back to them.
Thinking of the resolution, probably should have missed it.
Okay, good point. All right, anything else?
Is there an executive session?
Yes, ma'am. I'm making a motion that we go into executive session for these personnel and does anybody, anybody got any, Mr. Taylor, you have anything?
We're, we're putting real property down as well as, plus the, just get you.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion, a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, thank you, folks. Appreciate you being here.